Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the co-star, the official newspaper of the Borough of Belmar and the Asbury Press on December 4, 2019, and notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. To keep our residents safe and abide by the latest state regulations and CDC information, we are bringing this meeting to you through Zoom. This meeting will run just like any other regular council meeting. Our multimedia director will be the Zoom administrator throughout the meeting. You will still be able to comment during the public comment sessions. When the time comes, you will click on the raise hand button. Our multimedia director will then unmute your microphone one at a time so you may speak. Please state your name and address before you speak. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, April. If everybody could join me in saluting the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. If you could just take a moment of silence for our troops, their families, our first responders, all our healthcare workers. And I just mentioned two people that passed since our last meeting. Chuck Provenzano, he was a Belmar Class II Special Officer for us for a couple of years before moving on to Corrections Officer. He also is a fireman, grew up town, and my heart goes out to the Provenzano family. And also Dorothy Walsher, for my mother who passed away since our last meeting. We've got some workshop items, just things to update on this COVID-19 virus. You know, we are monitoring the Office of Emergency Management and our police department are monitoring things every single day and trying to keep our town safe. We know that we have a lot of people coming into town on nice days and wanting to take a walk in our town, and they should be staying in their own towns, but we are having an influx. We're not alone in this. All the Jersey Shore towns are having this problem. Today, we put an executive order out. We are going to not limit the whole town to resident-only parking because there's some could be some legal issues into that. But what we decided to do is we're going to take, as needed, different parts of our town to start doing limited, if we deem that people are coming into different sections of town, like say the south section of town, which we see there's a problem down there, we're going to make it resident-only parking. And then if we start to see around the lakes, we're going to make that resident-only parking, and we're going to have the ability to adjust it as we need adjusting. If it comes to a point where we have to make everything east of Main Street, that is going to be residential parking, but we're going to monitor every single day. We're going to put, we think that we should be able to be able to do it in spot sections of the town to control the amount of people that are coming into town. So that goes into effect today. We're going to be working on that, starting tomorrow, to figure out how to do the signage, and we'll be working with the Chief, Office of Emergency Management, as well as our DPW Director, Mike Campbell, on figuring the best ways to start to limit some of the parking to residents only. Some of the discussions that we had, because we were having most of our problems during the day on nice, warm days, we're looking at maybe timing it in some areas, maybe seven to seven, but we're going to be monitoring it. Our chief has taken a look at it, and so we put that in place today, and we feel that that's the best course of action after talking to Jerry Dusty, our legal counsel, and looking at what we could do legally not to get in trouble with anything. So we're putting that in place today, and we're going to be working on that. I know a lot of residents are very concerned about everybody coming into our town during this pandemic, so we're working on that. I'm going to let our business administrator talk a little bit about the other things that we've been putting in place since our last meeting, and some of the different things that we're doing with this COVID-19, because that's on everybody's mind. So Ed, if you could just speak a little bit about what's been going on?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Like the mayor said about the executive order, all these stipulations are put in place to have people comply with the stay-at-home order that the governor has issued, as well as the non-essential travel by individuals in the state of New Jersey. Essential travel should be for medical, grocery, and things of that nature, but the stay-at-home order is in place, and we're trying to discourage people from driving through town. That's one of the reasons why we're putting some of these steps in order. This is only for the time being with the COVID-19 situation while there's a state of emergency declared by the governor. So we're going to monitor Office of Emergency Management along with the Chief of Police. We'll monitor all sections of town to make sure that we have social distancing in mind and an attempt to make sure that everybody doesn't overcrowd our beaches or Ocean Avenue so we can keep everybody safe. We continue to work with our local county, state, and federal partners in regards to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Office of Emergency Management carefully monitors everything. We're trying to return all the phone calls that we get to our residents and other people that are interested in what's happening in town, as well as the emails that we get. We do hear everybody. We do want to make sure that everybody understands that they should take some self-responsibility for their own liabilities, and those who are at risk, if they're fearful of being in a crowd, they should actually stay at home. Everybody has to take responsibility for their own health and well-being, and we've asked that of our residents, and they're doing a great job for us. It's just a lot of people are flocking down to our Ocean Avenue, which is causing quite a concern. So we're just trying to make sure that people adhere to the stay-at-home mandate by the governor, as well as the essential driving ban. So that's where we're at so far with where we're at with the emergency management.
There we go. Okay. Sorry about that, everybody, but thank you, Ed, for that update. Just a couple other things, and the reason why we're doing some of this limited parking in different areas is because we have to actually look at all our businesses, too. I mean, they're the ones that are open and for takeout delivery and all that. They're advertising outside of our town, so you know, we're very aware of that, that you know, they need to make some money to stay afloat. So we don't want to, we don't want to stop some of their businesses from coming in. So the totality of everything, that's why we're working so close and putting this type of parking restriction in place, just so we look at everybody and make sure that, you know, everybody's being taken care of and trying to stop the flow of traffic coming into our town, just for people coming in that want to come down to the beach. So, you know, the other thing I have on workshop was, Ed, you want to talk about, last summer, we got a letter from FEMA about that we had to return a million dollars that was overpaid to us, and our administrative staff worked very hard to get that reduced. And I'll let our business administrator, because he was fully involved in getting that done, along with our CFO and some of the people from FEMA, to get it reduced to half, so I'll let you talk about that. It was a little bit of good news in this horrible time that we're having, but Ed, if you could give us an update on that.
I got you, sir. You're ready to go, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. As everybody knows from the reports, last year, we got a letter from the state police Office of Emergency Management that we owed over a million dollars for the boardwork repairs from Sandy. Through the work of our financial department, Christine Bridgett, and Office of Emergency Management, Robin Kirk, assisting us with her knowledge of the past, we were able to have them review, FEMA and the federal government reviewed, other things that they did not consider at the time. I don't have the exact figures in front of me. I haven't got the letter yet from the state, but we were advised last week that we don't owe a million dollars. We're down to, in the area, $560,000 or so that's owed. We do have the money to cover that in a separate account, so we are not going to expend any funding to pay that million dollars back. We have it covered, so I'm thankful for our finance department, as well as the assistance of Robin Kirk, who's part of our OEM team to work with the federal government and make sure that we didn't have to pay over that million dollars back. So everything's working out. I'm just waiting for the official letter to come in, and then I'll have the exact figure.
Thank you, Ed. Before we move on, does any of the council members have any questions on that, on anything? Okay. The other thing that I wanted to...
Hold on, Mayor. I think, Tom, did you want to say something? Let me unmute you. We're having muting issues now. Stand by one second when I find Tom's name. Thank you.
Yeah, for some reason, I can't unmute myself. I don't know why. Mr. Kerschenbaum, there was an email that was circulated, and I think the signs are up, about the railroad crossings at Seventh and Eighth being updated or upgraded. Can you just, you know, give us an idea of what that's all about? And does that also include the crosswalks for the, you know, for the senior building?
Yes, we got a project in the works for Seventh Avenue and Eighth Avenue Railroad Crossing. It's to upgrade that railroad area. That's the only area that's going to be revitalized. It's going to start at Seventh Avenue first, then it's going to go Eighth Avenue. We're going to have it done before Memorial Day. We start in a couple of weeks. There are signs already out for detours. Myself, the Department of Public Works, and the chief met with the Department of Transportation, New Jersey Transit, last week, so they're going to upgrade the crossing at Seventh Avenue and Eighth Avenue. There's going to be a pedestrian walkway, but this does not include the senior complex, a thing that we've been working on with New Jersey DOT. So it's an upgrade. It will be done before, on or about May 22. We have the signs out there for detours. We'll have everything out on our social media, so that residents are aware of when actual work will begin.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Just one other thing I wanted to bring up. I said I would bring up at the last meeting, the Dobco project, we gave them 45 days to do things and have things put in place before we would even name them as a redevelopper. The 45 days have passed. I've talked to the property owners, I know Mr. Dusty's been in head correspondence back and forth with them, but I've talked to the property owners north of us that have to be involved before we even get involved, and they tell me that they are close to signing contracts, but because of this covert COVID-19 virus, the attorneys are working from home. They're slow getting response back and forth, but they say they are close, so we'll keep you up to date. Before anything happens, those property owners got to be on board before the borough ever even looks at this. So when they tell me that they're, they have signed contracts, and then we will begin speaking again, they'll only have a certain amount of time, though, before they have to either do something or the property owners will have to look at another developer. So we'll keep you posted, but that's where we are on that. The 45 days have passed, but I told the property owners that we'll give them a little leeway only because of this virus going on and the way that they're negotiating contracts, and I'm sure everybody knows, no offense, Mr. Dusty, but how attorneys are, they take forever. So...
It's okay, Mayor.
That's where we are right now, and I think that's all I have. If anybody has any questions...
I actually had just one other thing, not on that, but I just wanted to, can we just discuss again the summer rental inspections and start dates? When are those going to start, and what are the dates? Are we still working with the same date, or is it getting pushed out?
Right now, we still have it. All the inspections are on hold till May 6, and all summer rentals are on hold until Memorial Day weekend. That could change very easily as we get closer to May 1. That's when we'll make the decision whether we're going to go further out. We'll be in touch with the governor's office, the county, and basically, it's whenever the governor basically tells us that we can start opening things up. It's the same with the beach. Mike Campbell and his crew have been down there. I've instructed them to continue to do just like we're getting ready for the summer, and as we get closer, if they tell us that the beach cannot be open, well, then it'll stay closed, even though we're putting everything on it. But we can't wait till the last minute on everything, so right around May 1, we're going to make a decision on summer rentals based on what the governor's looking at, what the county's looking at, and we're, and our business administrator is in contact with them three and four times a day because everything is changing so quickly. And as other towns do differently, you know, make changes, we have to make adjustments for what the other towns are doing. So we're monitoring all the other towns. They want to have conference calls all the time about what we're doing for the beaches, but I think our position is what the governor is going to instruct us to do. So right now, we're on hold, and we're still on hold till May 6 for any type of inspections and Memorial Day, but like I said, if we're coming up to May 1, that could all change.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate Councilman Carvelli's question about the summer rentals, and I think it needs to be said that, you know, we really have to go with what the state tells us. There are some encouraging numbers as far as the infection rate from north of here in New York City and North Jersey, but in the governor's conference today, press conference, he made clear that the surge is moving down towards Central and South Jersey, and all the hospitals in our area are basically at capacity. They expected that, and everybody staying in place is really helping to flatten the curve, but we're still behind where the real bad epicenters were as far as seeing our surge and seeing our numbers start to go back down. That's what we really need to see. It would be a shame to lose a Memorial Day weekend. Oh, my God, you know, it would be awful, but it would be even worse if we left the beach open, had the normal crowds on Memorial Day weekend, and because of that, two weeks later, we have a huge uptick in infections. We really can't take that chance. So we have to, I think you're on the right foot right there, as far as let's wait and see what the state and the county tell us. And I think every, the reason I'm saying this is because this, these are the questions I'm being asked all the time. People are going, what are you going to do about the beach? What are you going to do about, well, the answer is, we're going to do what we can, and we're going to do it to be safe. We're going to make sure people are as safe as possible, and we're going to make sure we do everything to make sure our businesses are in a position to stay open, if possible, and to stay in business.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, you know, we're, the Shore towns are all in this together, so, you know, we're trying to work with the governor's office and the county, and of course, our business administrator is doing an unbelievable job, keeping everybody informed and putting in 12-hour days on this thing, and that's what we want to do. We want to try to keep all our residents safe, and that's what we're looking at. So, and, you know, putting this, these orders in place that we could do different things and allow the police department to have the tools that they need to enforce what they need to do with the people coming into this town. So, you know, we're, like I said, it's hour by hour, day by day, so. But thanks, Council President. All right. No other, nothing else for workshop? Any of you guys have anything else for workshop?
No.
Is good. Pat?
Just something interesting. Two young boys pulled up this afternoon to the house across the street, and they were looking all around and announced themselves as my new neighbors for the summer, and they were moving in May 15. And I said, I don't think so, and would you tell me why? I said, well, I'm a councilwoman in town. Oh, okay. I said, you need to check with your Realtor because things are changing day to day. Can't say that. So they said, all right. They were very nice about it, and they understood the COVID, and I think maybe, you know, we need to talk to some of the Realtors in town also. Some of these kids are under the impression they're coming in early, and a lot do come in early. So I agree with Council President Tom about this. It is a concern. It's a big concern because if these kids come in early, should the governor say we can open up? And God knows, we need the economy here, but if they should come in, you know there are going to be crowds in these houses. How can we control this? This is questions I'm being asked here where I live. How can you control? Because you know you can have a house with two bedrooms and maybe a CO for four or six, and there's 20 there eventually. I feel bad putting our police in harm's way, even though the curves may show they're going down, but today we had the highest death rate, I believe, in New Jersey today. They're still caring, could bring it home, and I don't want to see our policemen put in danger. How can we possibly control this? You know, have them come in, and this is what the CEO says, and that's it. You can't have any guests. This is something I think that's going to come up also.
Well, our Office of Emergency Management is in contact with all of our Realtors. They know what it is right now, and if we have some landlords that are putting people in without the real estate agents, I mean, hopefully that people contact us and let us know about that so we can address it and make sure that they're not getting in. So, I mean, you know, we're going to have to keep an eye on it, see what CEO has been applied for, and watch those houses to make sure that they don't get in.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I thought you did a nice job in the tap into article explaining the restructuring of our finance department, but since it is a resolution here tonight, I thought maybe for the benefit of the public, it might be worthwhile to just take a brief minute to explain what's happening there. So, you know, their finances are being handled in an appropriate manner and the changes that we're making.
Well, the resolution that's on tonight is to appoint Christine Minolio, who was our CFO, to the assistant. So that's what's on tonight, but it, so far, it's working, it's working well with the three people that we have in place, and we're monitoring that also to make sure that our finances are being taken care of. So right now, whoever's working from home is doing a great job. Christine is, you know, she's right there doing everything. It's, the only change that we have is we brought in a shared service person from Carteret so that take a little bit of pressure off of her, and we readjusted salaries so it doesn't cost us any more money. But right now, it seems to be working good. The resolution tonight is just to make Christine the Assistant Finance Officer. Anything else? All right. Petitions. If anybody has a petition, if they can email them to April or drop it off at Borough Hall, we'd appreciate that. And April, we're going to approval in minutes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 7 meeting?
Motion?
Back in.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilmember? Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wong?
This thing keeps muting on its own. Go ahead. Yes?
Mayor Walsher.
Yes. Okay. Reproved to council. Councilman Carvelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I hope everyone is home staying safe. I really don't have much to report. All of my boards and committees have been canceled up until now, but, you know, I do realize that this is a difficult time for many, and, you know, I'll tell you what I've been telling my family, you know, just do the best you can to stay, stay healthy, to stay active, you know, get out, the fresh air is coming, that, you know, we're, we're in our own town, so, you know, getting out, getting some exercise is very important. And, you know, I really do think that we should do whatever we can. You know, like I said, it is, can be, it's probably a difficult time for many, but, you know, if we could support our businesses in town however we can, that would be, that would be great, and I'm sure that they would appreciate that. And then, you know, finally, I've seen a lot of stuff on Facebook and whatnot, you know, for people donating time and meals and, you know, whatever else to our frontline health workers, and, you know, I'm very appreciative of that, and it's great when, when communities pull together. So I hope to see that continue, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully, we get out of this pretty soon, and, you know, things, things start to get back to normal. So that's, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCracken?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We didn't have reports of the council at our last meeting, but the first meeting of April, the first Monday of April, April 6, the Belmar Housing Authority did have a virtual meeting. Things are going well there, and as a matter of fact, one of our local civic organizations, the Friendly Sons of Shalala, contracted with a local restaurant, Spring Lake Manor, and resident, and meals were delivered to all 53 residents there last Friday, and I know the residents appreciated that greatly. So it's great to see organizations such as the Shalalees do such wonderful things for the seniors in our community and bring them a nutritious catered meal. The Shade Tree Commission has also been meeting virtually. The last meeting, they reviewed an ordinance from another Monmouth County municipality to sort of get some ideas to revise the Belmar ordinance. They didn't feel that that municipality, the recommendations in that municipality were fit, so there, we're doing some other research to see what other municipalities that have done similar to ours, because everyone on the Shade Tree Commission is, I think, of the agreement that, you know, slight modifications and improvements need to be made in an ordinance, and that any ordinance that a municipality has should be periodically viewed for its Obviously, this COVID-19 has disrupted our, all of our lives, and, you know, obviously, I think we're getting a lot of better information on how to contain this disease and control it, and, you know, we certainly keep our thoughts of the governor and encourage him to develop a statewide plan for testing so that we can reopen our economy. Obviously, when you shut down the economy, you shut down the resident, the revenue stream, but we want to keep all our residents safe and hope that the state has identified the resources to be able to slowly start opening the economy in a safe way so we can get people back to work.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wong?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, am I on mute? No, it's working. Good. Councilman McCracken, nice beard, looking good. Sorry about that. Sorry about that, Mayor. I couldn't pass up. Um, Mike, my committees, again, parks or recreation are closed. They did, we, nothing much is going on. I did send out a report to our community policing program, to our zone chiefs and our block captains. That things are as usual, nothing has changed. If you see something, send your reports. It'll be, you're going, going to be following the same protocol we used last year. As you and I, Mayor, spoke, we're going to have a meeting coming forward with the chief, borough administrator, yourself, Frank Sinella, police patrolman, Popper, because things are changing day to day. And I want to make sure that our community policing program is up to date on what's happening, especially now with the residence-only parking, where it's going to be what are, what we should do. So they will be filled in later as we have our meeting and as Borough Hall gets all set for what's coming. Again, I can't thank you and everybody down at Borough Hall, chief of police, borough administrator. I don't want to miss anybody, but everybody down there has been working 24/7. I mean, you're killing yourselves down there. And I, I know you are. And I, I wish everybody in town would appreciate how hard you are working. These are unusual circumstances. This COVID-19 has changed the world as we know it right now. And for those of us who've been locked in, I know I'm ready for a padded cell right now. It's been a month. It's tough. It's, it's been tough on everybody. My heart goes out to our businesses. I know they're struggling, they're hanging on. And hopefully, soon enough, we'll be able to support them the way we always did. But again, thanks for everything and everybody out there, stay safe, stay at home. There are a lot of good movies on. I can't tell you the names of any because I've watched too many. But stay home, stay safe. And if you have a mask when you go out, don't forget to wear it, gloves. Wash things off before they come in the house, you know the drill. And just stay safe. And I think so far, we've done a great job in Belmar because we're great people. Thank you, Mayor. That's my report.
Thank you, Pat. Council President Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I concur completely with Councilwoman Wong. I think everybody's doing a really good job. And I just want to make sure everybody stays, safe and stays well. First, I just wanted to, on behalf of myself and, and basically everybody, my, my wife and myself and everybody here, we, I want to express our condolences to the mayor and his family on the loss of his mother. It's, you know, you know, and here's the other thing. I mean, you, I grew up in a big family too, not, not as big as yours, but it was a pretty big family. And one of the things that always works well for big families is if, when you have an event, a family event, joyous or not, you get together, you're, you're all there together. And it's really tough that that can't happen for you now. And I know you'll get a chance to do that sometime in the future. And, and, you know, our thoughts are with you and our family.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm also, there's no environmental commission meetings, no tourism, no harbor commission. But I did, believe it or not, get an email from the Belmar Arts Council about stuff going on. So rather than read the whole thing, what I'll tell you is they, they made clear that the building is closed and it's not going to be open in any time in the immediate future. It's closed until further notice. But they're doing a lot of things online. I looked at their website last night, belmararts.org. They have virtual tours of not only the gallery in the art center, but also other museums as well. I've been reading that a lot of museums are doing this. They're making their, the tour that you would take inside the building, they're making it available outside the building as a virtual tour. They're also still, believe it or not, doing some classes. There's a shared photography, shared interest group. There's some other things, a watercolor group. What I would say is if you're interested, just go to belmararts.org, look at the, look at their virtual offerings, there's a whole page of them, and see anything you want to do. You know, they're offering it for free, so you might as well just go for it. The other thing I wanted to do with my report is just ask, if I could, ask a couple of questions about how we're going to be doing the local parking only. And I, I applaud the mayor, the whole, really. You and I discussed this, Mayor, about this was something we were probably going to have to do. And I really applaud you for taking the step because I'm sure everybody here has been getting inundated with what are you going to do about this? And what are you going to do about that? And it's really clear, you know, Belmar wants to welcome our visitors. We know it's really important for the town, basically for the whole spirit of our town. And we've been welcoming. And part of the problem is other towns around us have been closing their doors. And that means that everybody's coming to us. And that's not good for our residents. Our residents are concerned. They want to make sure that, we want to make sure that everybody's going to be safe. So how are, we're going to put up signs, yes?
Yes.
Okay. How are we going to check to see if someone parking there is a local resident? Can you tell me that?
Well, how we're gonna, we're gonna start doing this is that Mike Campbell and his crew are going to put up, put up the signs. We're gonna, we're gonna depend a lot on the residents because we have to implement it right away, especially the south end of town. Ever since that Spring Lake closed off all their parking, everybody's coming trying to park on, on the south end of our town. We've closed off, we, we were monitoring North Boulevard, which a lot of people were coming in. So we closed that off, which helped. It pushed some of the, some of the cars and traffic into parking in the neighborhoods down there. So that's the first one that we're, we're going to take a look at. Probably from 16th Avenue South, we're going to work on that first. It's going to depend on a lot of the residents down there. If they see somebody pulling up, call us, we'll go down and check it out. We're going to ticket and tow cars to make sure that they, they know we mean business. But we're going to need a lot of input from the residents because we don't want to be towing residents' cars or anything like that. That's why we were even contemplating on putting times on it from like seven to seven because most of the problems is during the day. We're not having an influx of people at night. It's mostly during the day. So we were contemplating that idea. But we're going to, we're all going to meet tomorrow. Mike Campbell, Tina Scott, the chief, Eddie, myself. And we're, we're going to figure out how to implement a plan. I think we're going to start it in the south of the town. We're going to see how it works. We might have to make adjustments as we go along. But that's, that, that is our thought process on how to start it and how to start it quickly without, you know, notifying the residents and getting all different kind of things to put in their car. So we think that at least with the signage up, because even when we put along North Boulevard that they couldn't park, it stopped a lot of influx of people down there. So we put the signs up that said, you know, parking for residents only. We're going to monitor that. And then we're going to see how the signage works. You know, there'll be one or two that we can't catch. We're, we're hoping that we could depend on the residents. And if they see somebody parking, they'll, they'll call us, we'll send somebody down and take care of it. And, you know, Sundays, and it seems like it's only on, well, I shouldn't say Sundays, on nice sunny days.
Yeah.
We're going to have to look at, start looking at Silver Lake. There's a lot of parking that's coming in down there. So that would, that's our two areas of concern right now. The north end doesn't seem to have as much of a problem. We know the west, the west part of Belmar doesn't seem to have a problem. But we're monitoring it all the time. Lake Como is, I'm not sure if they're doing it tonight, but they are contemplating on shutting their parking down in their town. So what that's going to cause is going to cause people coming into our town. So every town that does something, whatever they act that they do in their town, there's a negative reaction to our town. So that's why I say we're going to monitor it. And we're going to use this tool that we put in place to try to deter people from coming in. And, but then, on the other hand, you know, we want our businesses to try to make a few financial dollars. They are doing an unbelievable job in our town. I mean, the food deliveries that they're doing, every one of the restaurants are stepping up, trying to help out everybody. So, you know, you want to try to, you know, not deter people from coming into our town to stop at our restaurants, you know. So it's, it's a little bit of a balancing act, but that's how we're going to try to do it. And if it comes to a point where we got to close off parking east of Main Street, we'll be able to do that with this order that's been put in place. So we could use a, a good tool for whatever we need.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I think you have it. Those are the two hotspots. We want to see how that works out. I think you've got it very well under control. I really appreciate the effort that you and everybody else has made to address this issue. Couple of good news things. I saw Federico's delivery vehicle the other night. Am I, to understand, the Feds is open?
Yes, as far as, oh, yeah.
Outstanding, outstanding. I know we're on order in tomorrow. Okay. And I, again, I want to also encourage everybody to support our local businesses. They're doing a great job. Make sure you tip extra heavy because they're not making the tips that they normally make. And one other thing, I mean, I, I'm with Councilwoman Wong. I, I kind of can't wait for this to be over, but I'm just trying to make the best of it while I, I know it has to be in place. But I found out that my daughter can bake. She, but the, she doesn't live here. She lives in her own apartment. So I'm finding that when we get food deliveries, and some of it's for her, I get to bring her food and she leaves me cake. Which has got to stop. All right, but it's really good. I'm really glad. I hope everybody else's family as well, my family as well. So, you know, we're going to get through this. We will. We'll get through this and it'll be an interesting story to tell sometime down the road. All right, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to echo what everybody else has to say. I, I got a Chief Scott, Mike Campbell, Ed Kirshenbaum. Everybody that's working in, in the, in the borough has been 110% on, on this COVID-19. And, and like I said, the restaurants have been doing great, trying to get everybody fed. And I have to re, I just have to mention the Belmar School. The teachers are coming in every single day, delivering food to all the kids that, that need food. And, I mean, you know, if this was lasting one or two weeks, it would be too bad. But we're in the fourth week now and they're there every single day, getting the food out, making sure these kids are fed. So I just got to mention that. But, you know, everybody's doing a great job. And we're just trying to get through this the best we can. So that's, that's all I got. So April, we're going to go on to public session for our consent agenda items. John, have anybody out there that has a question?
All right, stand by, everybody. You can use the raise your hands button and I can get to you. We have 36 participants, so let me just make sure no one is raising hands for right now. Okay, we have a Jane, I think is on a phone call. See if we can allow Jane to talk. Please say your name and where you're from. Let's try for Jane. Standby. Jane, are you there? Hold on, standby. This whole unmuting thing is not fun. Standby. Jane, are you there? She's also, this is a phone caller, so we might be having some issues on their end with the phone call. Jane, are you ready? Are you there?
This is Eugene Kramer. Jane is my wife.
Oh, okay. Well, she signed up. Well, thank you, thank for her and thank you. And you guys, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Kramer.
All right. This is regarding Resolution 2020-102. And this is a wording of a contract for automated teller machines on the boardwalk.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I'd like to know, what functionality are these automated tellers providing?
Well, they're going to be at each ticket booth only because we, we never straightened out the, the bandwidth that we have down there. So all it is, is a convenience that people don't have to walk to 7-Eleven. So it's there for convenience if they don't have the right amount of money for beach badges. So we've had it, we had it last August when our bandwidth, our broadband, whatever, whatever it is down there that isn't letting our computers work to take credit card, take credit cards. So we put them on there for convenience only. And that's what they're there for this year until we get that problem solved. So that, that's why we put it out for bid. We did it in August last year as an emergency and we put it out for bid this year. But it's only at every ticket booth, just in case, and it's for convenience only.
Okay, I, I guess the next question, do, do they, do they distribute cash? In other words, does the ATM, you know, spit out money? Or is this just a payment for beach badges?
No, no, no. It spits out cash so that they can pay for beach badges. We have nothing to do with it. So like if they, they don't have enough cash to buy the beach badge, they need to use their credit card to take the, get the cash out of the machine. We only put it up there for convenience.
Mayor, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Des.
You may want to mention that the, the company is paying to Belmar over the course of the summer, a minimum of $10,000 for those machines. And we may even go over and above, depending upon the number of transactions. But the borough will receive $10,000.
That's if we get open to beach. But they, they have to pay us to have the machines there.
Yeah, that, that money would not go to the borough. That would go to the beach utility.
Yes, correct.
That, that's all beach utility.
Correct.
Where do they get the energy to operate? In, in other words, are these machines green or, or do they?
I, I think they have to plug into our electric.
Okay. They're not going to use more than $10,000 worth of electricity, are they?
No, I don't think so.
I, I don't know. The, do they clean the cash at all? It, it says automatic, automated teller machine service. What do they actually distribute? Cash that, you know, I mean, is this going to be a, a source of spreading of, of a virus? You know, cash?
I think it's like any kind of exchange of money. I mean, you have to be careful that, and like I said, we don't even, we're not even sure if the beaches are going to be open to start. So, but we, we, we're going through all the motions. Like at some point this summer, we will open the beaches. And since they worked out so well last August, just for convenience, we, we decided to put them on until we get this, this bandwidth problem straightened out down the beach, which we've been talking to Verizon all winter long, trying to get things that look aesthetically nice down at the beach, as far as antennas and stuff. So we're still negotiating with them. We won't definitely have it this summer, but I'm sure by next summer, we'll have it. And then we won't need those, the ATMs.
Yeah. Okay. So they have to be replenished probably by armored car and parked somewhere down there by, by where the machine is located?
I don't know how they replenished them last year. I, I know it was probably during the night sometime that they replenished them. Or I think they have a time limit if they run out of cash in the contract that they have to make sure that they're there to replenish the cash that's in them. Or so it's, I know it's spelled out in the contract. I think it's either 15 minutes or 30 minutes to have to come down if the machine's empty.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, what my concern is. What, what you're describing there is, is no different than a bank. Okay? Automated teller machine is a bank. In fact, well, these banks are closing down now more than ever. And in their place, they're putting automated teller machines. I, I know that the town had gotten approval to build a boardwalk on the beach. But I don't think it ever got approval to build a bank on the beach or to place one on the beach. Did we get DEP approval to have these things put out there on the beachfront?
Jerry, I don't think we needed, do we?
No, sir. No, Mr. Kramer, we don't, Dad, this is not a permanent structure. And no DEP approval would be required, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. John, we have anybody else?
Yes, standby. Thank you for that. And muting, and we have a Chris. Standby for Chris. It takes a minute. And standby. Chris, are you there, sir?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and where you're from and your, go ahead.
My name is Christopher Piccone and I'm from Belmar. And first off, I thank, I want to thank everyone for the great job they do and everything that you guys continue to do and have done for a great town in Belmar. So, especially during these difficult times. But want to applaud the decision to close or restrict parking on the southern.
Chris, I hate to, I hate to stop you, but this is just public session on the resolution item. There'll be a public session at the end of the meeting. I hate to, I hate to stop you, but this is just public session on the resolution item. There'll be a public session at the end of the meeting.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. I'll keep your, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get rid of the hand that raised. And so when it comes to part you would like to speak, you can raise your hand again. Thank you, sir. One second, please. Lowering hand. I see no more. Go for it.
I wanted to talk about the resolution.
Okay, thank you, John. April?
Can I have a motion to close the public session?
Motion moved.
In a second? Can I have a motion to approve the resolutions as listed on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Wassifer?
Yes.
Next, we have second reading and public hearing on several ordinances. The first ordinance is 2020-19. This is amending Chapter 19 traffic. If anyone from the public would like to comment on this ordinance, please click the raise hand button and wait to be called on, and then state your name and address.
I'm looking. We have, okay, we have a couple coming in.
So we got a couple.
All right, we start with, stand by. Joan. One minute for Joan. And Joan, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your address, please.
Joan Corallo, A Street.
Joan.
Hi. Sorry about Dottie Mark. Love.
Oh, thanks, Joan.
This traffic, all these changes with these, the signage, changing a lot of street markings on the streets for throughout the town. Are we going to be losing more long-term parking spots with all of these changes?
This was just updating everything. We started to look through the whole town with looking at putting the park mobile in, and we're realizing that there were signs put up, but there was what the ordinance was. So we went around the whole town and we're trying to straighten out the parking, what the parking is with the ordinances that we have. So these are all changes, just updating everything that we have. So the police department doesn't have a problem with some reading on the sign that's different with the ordinance says. So there was a lot of time put into it and the whole town was taken care of. So we're changing all the parking and everything all in one shot.
It seems like there's just, there's gonna be a lot of sign pollution. Signs are already there. How are we gonna monitor all of this? You know, police-wise, fifteen-minute parking, thirty-minute parking, two-hour parking. There's, you know, so many different times and are we adding employees to the parking utility or anything like that?
This was the parking we always had and we always monitor it. Then, I think it was a couple fifteen-minute spaces we put in for a couple different businesses, but everything else is the same. So it being handled, it just looks like a lot because we've updated everything to match what we do. So the ordinance now matches what we do in the, for the parking.
There's a part of that ordinance also includes loading zones? Is that also?
They were there already, but they were never put in the ordinance. So to enforce them, you have to have them in the ordinance.
Okay, but there's no new ones. It's the existing.
No, no new ones.
Okay. Michael, you gotta paint those yellow lines.
Thanks, Joan.
Some yellow lines. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Muting Joan now. And lowering hand. And now we have, let's see, we got Mike Potts. Stand by for Mike, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just want to thank you guys for what you're doing and we really appreciate it.
Can you just state your name and address, Mike?
Mike Potts. I live at 707 10th Avenue.
Thank you.
I saw all the spots in the center on 10th Avenue are becoming enforced all day, every day. I just didn't know if there was a reason behind that. And my other concern is I have sometimes friends and family that come that take the train into the city that they stay with me. And obviously, there's parking down here is very limited. Is that gonna be enforced 24 hours as the ordinance says, or is there a reason it's changing, basically, is what I wanted to know?
Well, the ordinance already says that. It's just that we're updating our ordinances. The signs and everything are already there. So we're just updating all the ordinances through the, through, and to match the parking that we already have. So signs are there. That's what it is. It's already.
Gotcha, because some of the signs in front say ten, all the signs in the center say ten hours. That's why. Are those gonna remain ten hours or are those gonna switch to two hours?
Anything that's around the train station would be ten hours.
Okay, so the ones even in the middle.
And I believe we're close to you on the other side of the tracks that the parking behind Del Rio Towers, I don't think there's a timeline on those.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Muting. Talking. And then we have Eugene, not Jane. One second. And one moment. Should be, almost there. There we go. There we go.
Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
Here we go.
Eugene Kramer, Fourth Avenue.
Yeah, Kramer.
Okay. On Section 3 of the new parking ordinance, Section 19-40.1. It says paid parking zones and regulations shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. I looked up the existing ordinance, Section 19-40.1. And the title is different. Also, is different than, than what the new ordinance is proposing to delete in its entirety. But.
That part of the ordinance is being deleted because we're not gonna be using the kiosses anymore. We're gonna park mobile. I don't have, I don't have it right in front of me. Sure, Christian Bob, you have that in front of you?
I can see it. It definitely does. That's what it's for. It's for mobile parking application. That's what's in it.
Designation of paid parking zones.
Right? Yeah. So, the reason why we're deleting is because we don't have the kiosses down there, down at the beach anymore, and we're gonna park mobile.
Okay, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Yeah. Unfortunately, when you delete an entire section, the area that there's going to be a paid parking has been deleted. And it makes reference to, I guess, a future resolution. Although I don't know whether a resolution carries the force of law. But in any case, currently, the existing ordinance calls for parking meter zones on both east and west side of Ocean Avenue. All the way from the bridge up to Avon to the border south at Spring Lake. Both east and west sides. And of course, after Sandy, metered parking was never restored onto the west side of Ocean Avenue. I guess my question is, and by the way, this is another one that involves the Beach Utility. Because the Beach Utility has, is entitled to a share of the portion of the revenue that's generated by parking on Ocean Avenue.
We put all that in there in case we want to use it. This summer, we're just gonna do on the boardwalk and it's gonna be the portion that's going to the beach is gonna be the same as it's always been. We've put a lot of stuff in there just in case in the future that we do want to use, take a look at it. But for this summer, we are gonna just, we're gonna stay just for the paid parking the way it is. But we put the option in there that in the future, if we do decide that we want to use it, we can. But right now, we're just, we're just doing the same area of the paid parking. We're gonna see how this park mobile works. And we'll be looking at different areas of town that, as if we decide to put paid parking in other areas. But what, this park mobile, we could put up signs for one night somewhere. Say we're having an event in town and we've decided that one lot, we want to get paid parking. We can put the signs out there. We don't need equipment. So we put all these things into the ordinance in case we ever wanted to do that. So we put the both sides of Ocean Avenue, even though we're not gonna do it this summer. We're gonna see how it works. And we put them in there in case we do want to use them in the future. They will already be in there.
Mayor, the the both sides of Ocean Avenue apart have been deleted. That's what my problem is here, is there's no specific reference as to the east and west sides of Ocean Avenue. It's not included in the ordinance in front of you tonight, although it's included in the existing ordinance, both east and west side.
Well, what we did was, we can, we could set it now by resolution. That's why we put it all in there. So that's why we took out that whole section, because now as we change parking in different areas, we can just do it by resolution. Instead of having to go through a whole ordinance again and adding it back and forth. So we put it in there, but but it would be done by resolution if we ever need to do it down in the future.
Well, I guess what I, I guess what I'm concerned about is, like I said, parking meters on the west side of Ocean Avenue. If, you know.
Well, there's never gonna be meters again down there because park mobile is all, you don't need any hardware for that.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's not really what the issue is. It's a matter of paying for parking on the west side of Ocean Avenue. It was, like I said, back in the aftermath of Sandy, it was, you know, put aside, but the west side of Ocean Avenue was never removed from the ordinance, purposely so. That, what is that, meter parking on the west side or paid parking, whatever you want to refer to it as, is embedded in the ordinance. Now, if we take it out and eliminate it like, like it's proposed here, then, then it's something that would have to be changed, that somebody would have to, you know, there's all competing interests on Ocean Avenue, especially on the west side. You see, with the large number of parking, loading zones and reserved spaces, you've got the bridge operator needs a couple parking spaces and so on. But like I said, my concern is here is that it gets to be forgotten, not necessarily by this administration, but who knows going forward. And having lived on Ocean Avenue for eighteen years, I pumped more quarters into those machines than you could, you could imagine. Just sort of privilege of parking my car right on, in front of the place where I live. This goes way back, that, that that you pay for parking on Ocean Avenue. In fact, it's the only place that you have to pay to park on a public street in Belmar. And it had profound influence on the decision that the town lost to the public defender. That especially the sharing of the revenues from that. In fact, if the, if the, had the town had paid street parking in other places, Belmar would not have been forced to share that revenue with the Beach Utility. I think this should be kept in place, specifically both east and west sides of Ocean Avenue. Now, go ahead and carve out as many loading zones and so on, or parking, reserved parking spaces for first responders and so on. But I would keep that in place. Just my recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Okay, I'm muting Mr. Kramer. And stand by. I see no more hands. Go right ahead.
Can I have a motion to close the public session?
Motion.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-19?
Motion.
Second? Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Wassifer?
Yes.
He's off. Okay. Next, we have ordinance 2020-20. This is ordinance rescinding the flood damage prevention ordinance and replacing it with a new version. If anyone from the public would like to comment on this ordinance, please raise your hand and wait to be called on, and then state your name and address.
I see no hands. You can go ahead. I see no hands still.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-20?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
I want to thank business administrator Kirshenbaum for all the hard work he did getting this together. It's that we just got the letter from FEMA that our flood rating has improved. We went from a six to a five. It's a definite improvement. And this is gonna allow us to do even more of that. So definitely, yes. Thank you.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Wassifer?
Yes.
Okay, next we have ordinance 2020-21, amending Chapter 23, garbage and waste of the revised general ordinances. This is open for public comment.
I see none.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
And then a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-21?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Wassifer?
Yes.
Okay, next is second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2020-22. This is amending Chapter 11 personnel. And this is for salary schedules. If anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, raise your hand.
I see none.
A motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
And then a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-22?
Motion. Second.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilwoman Juan?
Yes.
Mayor Wassifer?
Yes.
And last, the second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2020-23. This is amending Chapter 23, entitled recycling program to regulate foam containers and plastic straws. Do you have a motion, or sorry, open it for a public hearing? If anyone has a comment, raise your hand.
I see none.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-23?
I'll make that motion. Thank you.
Second.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Now, public session. Chris, you can come back on and ask your question.
All right, standby. I see Chris, one moment. Hold on, these buttons are. All right, Chris, you should be there. Name and address.
Back to my question regarding parking and limiting the parking in the south side of town. I do live in the south side of town, so I appreciate that. But what's the hesitancy to limit parking in general east of Main Street? Because like you said, when they closed down parking in in Spring Lake, it pushed it into the south side of town. Who's to say that you don't close down parking in the south side of town and it doesn't push it into midtown and then up into the northern part of town? Why not just close all of east of Main Street as a whole? And what are the legal concerns or legal ramifications associated with that?
Well, that's that's some of the things that we're taking a look at is because we don't exactly know what the legal ramifications are. And we figured this is the easiest way to circumvent any of the legal problems or different problems, because we get a couple of different answers and we're still looking into it. See, if we closed off parking for everybody like Spring Lake did, that's for everybody. So then there's no constitutional problems with it. So we took a look at how we were going to handle all the different parking. Now, there's some parts of town, like the west part of town, there's no problem over there. So we decided that let's try it on a trial basis and see how it goes. You could be a hundred percent correct. It could be by doing this that we're going to end up closing everything east of Main Street. But we're going to, we're going to, we're going to take it day by day, hour by hour, and see the best course of action to take. I don't think that it's right to just blanket the whole town. You know, we, there's a lot of people that don't have parking. We don't want to be towing anybody's cars that actually live here, but are not registered here. So you know, we're going to take it, we're going to take it one step at a time. We think that this is the easiest step to take. We're going to monitor it. If we start to have problems, we're going to move it down. And we're and, you know, one thing, you know, our police department is going to be inundated with a lot of calls from people about, you know, people coming into town. So we have to, we have to take that into consideration. So we think that this is the best course of action, that we could, we could open them or close them wherever we see fit. And the police department and the office of emergency management takes a look to see where it where our needs are at that very time. So we're going to be monitoring the whole thing. And it was some point, it could be everything east of Main Street at some point. But, you know, we got to take a look at the town. Our town is unique because we have the county roads coming through. We have state highways coming through where a lot of these towns don't have that. So we're going to take it instead in phases, just like we've been doing everything else. Like I said, we saw there was a problem on the on North Boulevard. We closed that down. And as we go along, we're going to be taking a look at it. And the main thing is, we want to keep our residents safe. So we're going to, we're going to be monitoring every day.
Excellent. I appreciate the the action.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, putting him on mute. Standby. And then we're going to go to Linda on the phone. We're going to try this out. Should work. Standby. Linda, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you are great. Go ahead.
Yes.
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the mayor and council, Chief Scott, Mike, Ed, and April for all your hard work during the pandemic. I would like to suggest that during this time, we seize the opportunity on trying to find a way to control overloading in the summer rentals. And as we're determining whether that'll be lifting or if the state's going to do it, maybe we could come up with a program to ensure that we just are at CO capacity and no greater than that. That would be, I'd like to see that move forward in some way, shape, or form, since it seems we have still have a number of animal houses. And it's our opportunity really to clean them up. So I know you guys are very effective coming up with plans. Maybe this could be one of them. The second point I'd like to bring up is to Pat Wan. You had mentioned that information went out to the block captain. As a block captain, I haven't received anything yet. So appreciate if we could connect.
Oh, thanks, Linda, for telling me. It didn't, uh, wait a minute, my unmute. Thank you, Linda, for telling me. Yeah, they were sent out today. You didn't get it. I wonder if, all right, let me make some calls. Thank you, Linda, for telling me.
Okay, so that's it. Thanks for a great job.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda. I'll put her on lower hand. Standby. Katrina's coming up next. One moment. And standby for Katrina. And Katrina, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Trina.
Hi, Trina.
Hi, Katrina.
Thank you all very much. Ditto on everybody who's, you guys are just doing a great job. And it's a, it's just a very comfortable thing to know you're all at the helm over there. A couple points. Pat, I'm looking through my emails right now, and I didn't receive that either, just so you know.
Thank you, Trina. Me and computers, we know.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
It's great, because this is actually the reason I'm I'm talking to you guys tonight is is kind of like a parking issue. And I know you guys are aware of this. A lot of people are, both the police and and but on thirteenth, I guess I'm going to start with this. What exactly restrictions on huge commercial eighteen wheeler cabs parking in residential areas are there in Belmar?
Yeah, I know they can't park overnight. They can park up till nine? Is that what it is? Yeah.
So it's something like after nine PM till six AM, they're not allowed to park? Correct.
Correct, yes.
So you guys are talking a lot about parking. And as you know, I'm the block captain here over on thirteenth from A from Ocean all the way down to C. And on thirteenth, we've been having, it's a continuing problem. There's a huge eighteen wheeler cab. I know you guys know it. I'm only bringing it up so that maybe you guys can brainstorm and figure something out ordinance-wise or something. There's this huge gigantic blue eighteen wheeler cab that is parking on thirteenth between Ocean and B, and it's constant in front of people's homes. I mean, this cab is like you open, you look out your window and you're you and this huge cab is sitting there. I know the man has been ticketed a number of times because he does stay overnight. I, it's just, it's been a nightmare. And I can't tell you how many calls I get about this cab. And I know you guys have tried, the police have been there. Last week, the police were there and they were actually sleeping in the cab. The man and woman were in the cab of this huge thing, sleeping in front of this person's house. And she videoed it. And I could hear the police officer talking to them and saying, you're not allowed to sleep in your cab. All I'm just saying is, is there anything that you guys can do ordinance-wise, especially since you're talking out about parking right now, to try to prevent this? Because it's very, very intrusive for the people who live on that street.
Well, you're right. Maybe we could take a look at that and put like a thirty minute time limit. Or I know.
Or a tonnage, like a tonnage, like something over a certain amount of tonnage is not allowed to park in residential zone. I don't know the legality.
Yeah, anybody that's not making deliveries or anything like that, like, you know, construction materials or anything like that. But maybe we could take a look at the time, instead of, you know, keep it overnight, maybe something like thirty minute parking, if somebody's going to park and they're not unloading or anything. So we'll take a look at it, Trina.
Great, thank you. I really appreciate that, guys. Thank you. And again, thanks for all you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, looks like we have a, anyone else? Karen, standby. Standby for Karen. Karen, there.
Hi, I'd also Karen Crowe, one sixteen fourteenth Avenue. And I'd also like to echo what Linda and Katrina said. I think these Zoom meetings are so great, and I really appreciate it. And I'm just echoing Linda's concern about overcrowding if we have summer rentals. There's several on our block. The year-round residents are mostly over the age of fifty. We all get along. We're all great. And I understand the town needs the revenue, but it's just the overcrowding and the animal house. If we could, like Linda suggested, transition into a more family-friendly rental town, especially in the middle of Belmar, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, because it just gets unbearable in the summer. And the health issues is what this summer, you know, noise is annoying, but you have like eighteen people on a porch in a little tiny cottage. It puts all the year-round residents in danger if this pandemic is involved.
Yes, this is something we're going to be looking at and and in contact with everybody going into the summer to see if if these these type of groups are even going to be allowed in this year. So we'll keep you up to date as as we go along.
Okay, thank you. And again, I really love these meetings, keeping everyone informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Meeting Karen. Standby. Okay, and I see no more hands right now.
Okay, April.
Right, can I have a motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for tuning in tonight.
Thanks, John. Everybody take care. Good seeing you.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Stay safe.